Good evening, I would like to call to order the Warrington Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. First order of business, I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, the mayor is absent tonight. He's a little under the weather, so as board president, I will be running the meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from October 17th, 2017. We have approval to hire Brandon Weber as the lieutenant at $15,000 a year with a start date of November 6th, 2017, and then approval to hire Danny Elman at $14 an hour with the start date of November 6th, 2017 in the Public Works Department.
Any questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Gary?
Yes.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next, we will ask for an introduction of Brandon Weber, Lieutenant, and Daniel Elman for the Public Works Department. Who's going to do the honors for that?
I'll take Brandon Weber. Evening Board, I'd like to introduce Brandon Weber, new Patrol Division Lieutenant.
Welcome back.
Good day.
Welcome.
And then is Daniel Elman.
And this is Danny Elman.
There he is.
He's in the Public Works Department, working in the Street Division.
Welcome aboard, Daniel. Okay, at this time, we'd like to hear from the public if anybody's here that would like to approach the lectern, and we ask that you hold your comments to five minutes. Otherwise, please request to be on a future agenda. Hearing from, seeing nobody here, we'll move on to Board of Alderman comments. Anybody on the board?
I would like to mention two things. One, I wish Guy was here, but please pass on the maintenance crew led by Darren did a phenomenal job finishing the Tribute to the Veterans Memorial Site. The stormwater drainage is complete. All that infrastructure is in, the water lines are in, and then we had a crew that went out there and put the conduit for the electrician, so we fully expect that the concrete parking lots and driveway will be poured in the month of November. Contract has already been let, but they've done a really good job every time they've been out there. I can't express our appreciation enough, and I can't finish this without thanking Alderman Ock for bringing that site to the TTVM's attention. I had left office by then and wasn't anywhere the city owned it, so that, none of this would have happened without that phone call, so thank you. I really want to appreciate, I appreciate that.
Well, I did the smart thing. I made the phone call and I stepped away.
Well, wouldn't have happened if you hadn't made the call. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is I will be recusing myself when Item 12A comes up due to appearance of conflict of interest, and that is on the property liability insurance renewal. I'd like to state, and I will leave the meeting room during that time, I'd also like to make clear that I have had no discussions about insurance to city staff or employees.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close Board of Alderman comments. The mayor's not here, so we will move on to Item 9 has been omitted, the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement. That's going to be tabled to a later date. Item number 10, issuance of general obligation bonds for Pool Park. Joy Howard and Sean Flynn are here tonight. I think Joy spoke to us previous meeting, but you've got something to add, or are you kind of open for questions, or what's the status? Please state your name, and also make sure you get right into the microphone because we've had some comments from the public that not only do they want us to speak louder and be heard, but they want anybody that's speaking to make sure that you're talking into the microphone, so.
Okay.
You ready, Jan?
Joy.
Joy, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
So I'm Joy Howard, your financial advisor, and this is Sean Flynn, who's your bond counsel. You're going to have ordinance for adoption later on tonight to approve the sale of the bonds for the Aquatic Center, and I'm going to give you just a brief results from where I was two weeks ago when you got proposals, and Sean is here to answer any of the more detailed questions you have as far as on legality of the transaction or any questions on the bond ordinance. So basically, as you recall, two weeks ago, we reviewed proposals, and we selected the proposal from DA Davidson. It wasn't firm final rates, it was based on rate indexing, but they had the best proposal based on rate indexing. Their true interest cost that was in their proposal was at 2.72%, and the final rates came in today at 2.66%. So that was a combination of them doing exactly what they said they were going to do, as well as the market improving, and for the city that translates into having approximately $24,000 more to spend on the project. And that's all I have to say unless you have questions.
Any questions for Joy?
Now, how are the bonds going to be sold?
I think they're all sold already, to be honest.
Really? I guess that helps when you're going to get strong city rating.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Joy. Any questions? Sean, you got anything you want to add?
You know, as Joy mentioned, you'll have notice for you, you'll be adopting tonight, and it approves the interest rates and the purchase price, and bonds go out 20 years, so I'm happy to answer any questions, but there's not a lot more for me to add other than what Joy said.
Any questions for Sean? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that bill will be brought up later in the agenda, so we'll, next item on the agenda is Dr. John Bauer, President of East Central College in Union.
Well, good evening. I'm happy to be here. As you indicated, I'm John Bauer, President of East Central, and just, I think what would be helpful, I know there is a lot of discussion, a lot of interest in what could happen in terms of higher education offerings in Warren County, and so I was happy to be contacted by the city and would maybe just give a brief overview about the college, and in particular, the college's role in Warren County, a little bit of the history that we've had here, and really be open to any questions that you may have. We are a comprehensive community college, about 3,000 students. We were founded in 1968 and opened our doors in 1969, founded by a vote of the voters in 1968, and opened the doors in temporary facilities in Union a little bit over a year later. I think one thing that's really helpful to understand is, community colleges serve both taxing districts and then extended service regions, and the service region is really what we're talking about in Warren County, or much of Warren County outside of the Washington School District. So when voters adopted, or approved the formation of the college, it really created a district that is made up of 10 school districts, where most of Franklin County, not all of Franklin County, and actually get into parts of six counties. And it's six high school districts and four elementary districts, and those combined form our taxing district. So voters or residents in the area get the lowest rate of tuition, that's our in-district tuition, but also pay a property tax to support the college, and in many ways, our financing is very similar to a school district. But if you would look at the state of Missouri, just the landmass of the state of Missouri, and you take all 12 community college districts around the state, you would see pretty quickly that while we serve, those districts take in a great deal of the population, when you just look at the state itself, you would see much of the state is not located within a community college district. And so in the early 1990s, the colleges got together and really cooperatively divided the states into service regions, and so if there was an area of the state not in a taxing district but had a need and could be served by a community college, then within that service region, a community college would serve the area. And for East Central, that service region takes the taxing district, which is in parts of six counties, and then expands to most of about 10 counties. And to the north, Warren County was included in our service region. So in particular, in Warren County, our taxing district includes the Washington School District. So Martha'sville surrounding areas that are part of the Washington School District are part of our taxing district, so residents there pay in-district tuition, which is $85 an hour, but they also have a property tax levy of about 45 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. You get outside of the Washington School District, then there's no property tax levy, but a resident who's attending, say from Warrington, attending our institution would pay out-of-district tuition, which is about $122, is $122 a credit hour. So typically, what you'll see around the state is the out-of-district tuition is about 50% greater than the in-district rate, and that offsets the fact that there's no levy being paid from that area. So Warren County is part of our service region. If you go down to the south, to the southwest, down 44, Ralla's another large community that's in our service region. We actually have facilities, two facilities in Ralla, and over time, that has grown to be about 15% or so of our enrollment. We have about 3,000 students, as I said, and we have operated in Ralla, starting in a very small way, and then growing. I actually served as director at the Ralla site in 2004, 2005, and we've seen that grow. There's no other community college serving that region. In similar fashion, we have offered classes in Warrington in the past, and we've had just limited enrollment. We really haven't been able to get the same toehold and be able to grow enrollment in the past when we've had classes here. We've had classes both at the high school at times, and we've also been in the Alpha Academy that's operated by the school district, and it was also shared space, us and Lindenwood University also offered classes there. In 2012, 2013, we had about 50 students, about 230, 240 credit hours. That was kind of the high watermark for us, but we did have trouble getting enough enrollment to make the classes viable and support themselves. And so we don't offer anything at the Alpha Academy now. We do continue to work with business and industry throughout the region, and if there is a need, if you go over to the west, for example, down 70, we've been doing training and working with Certainty, for example, right on the Warren-McGomery County line, and we would continue. We've offered some welding training in Warrington in the past. So as there are needs, we continue to serve the area, but we don't have regular ongoing classes. Right now, we have about 130 students who are enrolled at East Central from Warren County, and as you can guess, most of those are from the Washington School District. They're in district and from the Martha'sville area, but we have probably about 40 students right now outside of that area that's enrolled, that are enrolled with East Central. So within a service region, if there is interest, and there is demand, and there is a need, and we can serve that, whether it's on the non-credit side, working with businesses and industries, or offering classes for credit, you know, we're very interested in serving that need. And I know over the last several weeks, over the last month or two, there's been more discussion about what could happen in Warren County. St. Charles Community College, obviously located to the east, down 70. The community colleges work very well together. We are truly partners. We really don't compete with each other, because we're serving distinct regions, and St. Charles is a wonderful institution. I think we're a wonderful institution as well, and you know, we have much the same mission. The lower division of courses that can transfer and lead to a baccalaureate degree for students who are interested, also doing career and technical programs for students who are interested in going into the workforce. So you know, I think one thing that we really pride ourselves, as I close, just in terms of remarks, I think it's maybe an appropriate example to think of business and industry. We won't go into a business and industry and say, "This is what you need." We really listen to what that business or that industry needs, and then figure, when we figure out, how can we meet that need for training? I think the same thing would apply, certainly apply here. We're interested in what the needs are here, and is there a sufficient need that would justify programs and services, and what that need really is? Is it interest in classes that lead eventually to, you know, lower division classes that lead to transfer? Would they be classes that lead more into career and technical programs? I mean, that can vary, you know, greatly by community and by region, so we're very much interested in what the need is here, what the community is interested, what's viable, and how we could serve that need if so desired. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope that gives you a little bit of an overview and draws the distinction between the service region and the taxing district, and why we've had a presence and had programs and services here in the past, and perhaps we'll be able to do that again in the future.
Questions for Dr. Bauer?
What's the mechanism for determining interest in an area? So if you were to try to reestablish classes in Warrington, what would, do you do community surveys? Or is it done through talking to the local school district?
I think it's, I don't think there's one single thing. We would certainly be interested in, and we've done some survey work in the past, and I know that there was also a community-based effort looking at the viability of programs. Obviously, there's a lot of demographic data that's readily available, and so you look at, you know, the percentage of adults with, you know, a post-secondary, some college credential, an associate degree, or certificate, or bachelor's degree, and determine, you know, what that need could be, you know, what that unmet need really is. But I think also absolutely, you know, you just have to talk to people as well, and not rely only on surveys. And so I think it'd be a combination of those things, surveying the region, using existing demographic and other data that would be available to us aside from the survey, but also listening to what we would hear from schools and other interested parties, yeah.
I think, too, if I caught your drift, you're talking about Certainty and meeting the needs of businesses, and so I'm sure you talk to businesses and different needs that they have, be it everything from welders to IT people, so I think that's becoming a great need. People are seeing that maybe it's the full bachelor degree doesn't need to be there, but there's a lot of, such as welders and tech work.
Actually, welding is one of the disciplines, or one of the fields that we hear more about than almost anything else. There's just a really tremendous unmet need, and that's really throughout the region. And often, it's not necessarily a degreed welder. It's a welder with the essential basic skills needed to be a welder, and a company then is interested in doing, you know, additional training on, and its own methods. We used to talk about, and I guess I still fall back to when I talk about a comprehensive community college, and we'll talk about transfer on the one side, and career and technical degrees leading into the workforce. That probably doesn't tell the entire story, because the third element is what you're talking about as well, and that's some non-credit training. Some of those can lead into credit, may then build into an associate degree or certificate, but it may also be short-term training that provides skills to people who are ready to go to work. And so it's really three elements, the transfer side, leading to a bachelor's degree, the associate degrees that lead into the workforce, for example, nursing, an associate degree nurse sits for the boards and, you know, then goes to work for the hospital, or physician's office. But then the non-credit side is a growing area for us, and we know, this is true across the country, certainly true in Missouri, when you look at job growth over the next several years, much of the growth is going to occur in those technical fields, not necessarily needing a bachelor's degree, so we're looking at how we fill those needs, how do we provide a skilled workforce for our region and for our state.
Does your school have a special relationship with University of Missouri at Ralla? So if a kid's interested in engineering, would be a natural pathway to hook into your campus as opposed to somebody else's campus because you have a little different relationship because you're already in Ralla?
Yeah, it's been really interesting and rewarding over the years. We've always had a really strong relationship, and a lot of pre-engineering students, even before we had a presence in Ralla, to be honest with you. One of our longtime faculty members eventually then went to work for UMR then, S&amp;T now, and after teaching at East Central, then taught there before retirement. So we've had a close relationship, especially in engineering. Just this fall, we announced a new program with S&amp;T that allows students to be duly enrolled, and this is particularly beneficial for students in Ralla or the Ralla area. And a student, for example, and we're going to start small and grow it, but a student may be enrolled, say, with us for 12 hours, and at the same time with S&amp;T for three hours, and that gets that student a full-time load. We've had dual admissions programs in the past where a student who knew that he or she wanted to go to Ralla eventually could be admitted, but then would start with us and eventually transfer. This is actually being enrolled in both institutions at the same time, and we think it's going to grow. It allows the student to have that experience at S&amp;T at the same time. Many of the gen ed courses, general education courses are being taken care of with us, allows the student then upon transfer to, you know, just kind of go right in, very well-prepared then to complete the bachelor's degree. So we just announced that this fall, about a month ago, and we think that's going to really grow. And one advantage of doing it that way, it allows the student who comes from an A-plus school to use those A-plus benefits. Couldn't use those benefits going straight to a university, but by being full-time with us for the 12 hours, could use the A-plus, and then, you know, perhaps get other aid or other assistance for the three hours, or whatever it may be with S&amp;T. So we look to grow that.
I was in a business meeting in San Luis County, and the gentleman mentioned his son was graduating this year as a senior, and he was considering Union because of the relationship to engineering school. I thought, "Well, I never knew that was part of a sell or part of a marketing."
Well, what's interesting is, we're in Ralla, and also, of course, the main campus in Union. We really don't do pre-engineering in Ralla. The pre-engineering is in Union. Students in that area who are interested in engineering may go straight there, but we have many students who do pre-engineering in Ralla and then transfer. So the dual enrollment program that I mentioned just now with S&amp;T, while it can apply to an engineering student, and it may, it will also serve students in other majors, and we think of an engineering school, we think of S&amp;T, but there are many other majors available too, and we think it will be beneficial for them. But the relationship, the transfer relationship is a long one that we've had, a pathway down 44 from Union to Ralla for a long time, and a good one.
Dr. Bauer, were you contacted by anyone about the concept of moving Warren County, or particularly Warrington and Wright City, from ECJC to St. Charles Junior College, or did you find out about it the same way we did?
We weren't contacted formally about that process or anything. As discussions started to take place, I know that St. Charles was interested in Lincoln County, you know, and what could happen there, I think is an outgrowth of that, there was interest, and then that conversation just naturally turned to what would be involved to join a district as opposed to a service region. And I didn't mention that, and I should have in my remarks, there's also a process, not just to be served by a district, but by a community college, but out of district, and there's a, but there's a mechanism for joining a district, and that involves an election, it means bringing on that tax levy, and that would really be up to the voters of a region if that were the interest. And so, so anyway, we came along, not really contacted in any official capacity, just as this conversation started to expand.
So, and I think that's what some of us have been trying to wrap our head around. Again, we've been informed primarily through Adam's publication, so if there's change were made then, that was being talked about, then there would be a tax, additional tax to the residents of that area?
It, and this happens by school district boundary, by law, to join a district, so if there's an area that's interested in joining a district, then that area then would take on that college's levy as well, and that would be true wherever. And right now, those, so if you look at Warrington and Wright City, they're not in any district.
Right.
And so, you know, if there'd be a vote to join one district or another, then that existing levy would then become part of the resident's tax obligation.
And do you have a feel for what that kind of levy would be?
Yeah, well, our levy's about 45 cents, as I indicated, and my understanding is that St. Charles levy is lower than that, low twenties, around 20, 20, low twenties, I should, I don't know specifically what it is, but it's in that region, that ballpark.
But if that were to happen, that would be something initiated by the school district?
The way the statute is written, it can happen one of two ways, and it actually doesn't happen all that often where districts are expanded, but it can happen by a school district putting it on the ballot, the school board putting it on the ballot, and then it's just a vote of the people, a simple majority. It can also happen by initiative petition. Interestingly, there is no mechanism for the community college board to put it on the ballot. It's one of those other two methods, either the school board or by initiative petition, and then it'd be a vote. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If you think of things, please contact me. We really are interested in listening and kind of learning what our role, you know, could be, and want to be responsive.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bauer. This is very enlightening, I think. Oh, you got?
Just one other thing.
Yeah.
What would be the mechanism, it kind of sounds after listening to this, that there almost needs to be a study done to see what, number one, the needs are, because kind of, we're, you know, we're trying to catch up on this, that there appears to be a need for industrial training as much as anything, welding and that sort of thing. What would be the next step that a government could initiate to get an idea of what the demand is and what the possibilities were?
I think I would say a couple of things here. One is to try to determine what region really is, you know, under consideration. Is it just, you know, one district? Is it multiple districts? Is it even beyond the confines of the county? Is there another, is there another group of districts that makes sense? I don't know if you've seen this, and we still have a copy. This was done in 2010. There was the Warrington Higher Education Committee is the name, and it was a needs assessment that was prepared at that time, and it was really, I think, focused primarily on the possibility of having a four-year, a branch campus of a four-year institution here. But some of the things that I talked about before were incorporated. What are the demographic data? What do we hear from business and industry? Those, the same kind of questions that I mentioned before. I mean, that's, that could be a starting point for kind of bringing that up to speed, for example, but I think you're right. I think, you know, what is possible, what's the demand, you know, specific demand, and, you know, where would that then naturally lead? I think those are obviously important questions.
Finally, do you have a handle for, you mentioned a training that took place at the Certainty facility. Do you have a handle for what those numbers were, like?
You know, I don't off the top of my head, and I'd hate to guess, but I'd be happy to follow up with you. I just hate to hazard a guess. to follow up with you. I just hate to hazard a guess. There was, yeah, there was interest there in, you know, initially as it was starting up, and then on an ongoing basis. I can get that information and forward it to whomever at the city, so it could be distributed just on how many people were serving there.
Get that back to Terry, I think that was.
Terry would probably, Terry Thorne would be the one to get that.
I'll pass that on, get that information. I wish I had it off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get it for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you very much, Dr. Bauer.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
I know, I'll just, I think one of the things that's going on, I know Representative Spencer had asked the EDC to kind of take a lead on this preliminary stuff. And if I'm not mistaken, they are trying to put together a committee of educators, public people and everything. And I haven't, I missed the last meeting, so I don't know where that's at. But I know they're, in fact, they were wanting to approach the city about having some representation on that, on that committee too. And it's more or less like this, what you asked Greg with some of the things that they, between government and the different districts. So, like I say, I'm not sure where that's at, but I know it's in process or something. So, okay. Okay, moving on, like to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations. You want to talk about property and liability insurance renewal, but I think you want to turn it over to Julie Myers?
Yes.
I think at this time, Alderman Costello is going to excuse himself, so. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Julie Myers. I'm with Tri-County Agency, and I'm the one that, the insurance agent that handles your insurance. And this year, I worked with Brandy going through the renewal, making some adjustments on your account. And the renewal came back with a 6% increase. And instead of just giving you that increase, I wanted you to be aware of what has caused that increase. Because it's sometimes it's a little bit misleading because there's been so many changes from when we renewed it last year. So, just to give you a quick overview, this year, like I said, it's a 6% increase, so the total is $179,877 annually. And that's for your general liability, your property, your public officials, your automobile, your inland marine contractors' equipment, things like that. So it's your whole package without the workers' compensation that comes due in April. And so the general liability did increase some, but the general liability is, the increase for those come from your budget and your expenditures. So as your expenditures increase, your, the premium portion of that's going to increase as well, because that's how it's derived. As far as the property, that's a little bit misleading, because I went back and looked at everything, and your property rate stayed exactly the same. The reason that you had an increase is because you did add the sewer lift station this year, which was a $609,000 structure that we're insuring. Other little things that we did at the sewer treatment plant, there was a modular building that was replaced there. There was the gazebo, the Pete Noblet gazebo on Morgan. And then there were some lights on Jazz Green that were added as well. So all those things impacted it, but as far as your rate itself was exactly the same, so the carrier did not increase that. As far as the automobile premium, that is where you saw your biggest jump, and that went up $5,878. However, we have added five new, brand-new vehicles, all with physical damage on them, and a trailer onto that policy. That is what has caused that increase. Other than that, there's just minor little changes. One is the law enforcement increase, but like the general liability, that's based on expenditures. So as your expenditures for the law enforcement program is going to increase, so is your premium for that particular area. And then the last thing is the inland marine area. And the inland marine are, where the property is things that stay stationary, the inland marine are, is an area where the insurance follows whatever particular item that might be. It might be, say, like a Bobcat, or a Skidload, or a Lawn Mower. You might take that to various places, and the coverage stays with it wherever it goes. So the reason that particular thing changed is Brandy and I worked really hard together in order to make sure that everything is probably the most difficult area to reconcile, I would say. But we made sure that you guys were still owning the items that are listed on that schedule, as well as making sure that items that are purchased throughout the year are being included on that schedule, or haven't been lost or left off in the process somewhere. So we made sure all that was in place. And then last year, there was a, we, you guys, we all talked about it, and I guess that would be an ordinance, I guess, would be called, I don't think that's, is that the right word?
It's a policy.
A policy, yeah. A policy was passed as far as different little rules that we wanted to implement, like if something was over $2,000 or under $2,000, we weren't going to insure those types of items such as that. So we went through and applied all those rules to the various areas. And so that actually decreased a little bit, just because of just cleaning up those schedules a little bit. So that's pretty much the bulk of any of the changes that have been made. I'm happy to answer any questions. You guys have been doing great this year. Your losses have been great. I know that we just, might have just had one, but other than that, we've, you guys have done well on your claims this year.
So what I hear you say is basically the underwriter really isn't increasing their rates, it's due to activity or changes within the city?
Correct.
So what will be the impact if we get the police department accredited, we're going through the accreditation process? Will that have an impact on the insurance rates? Do you know?
I do not, I don't think that it's going to actually change your insurance rates. You mean like get a credit? As far as, the one thing I love about this company is, despite how things have been in the past or whatever, any time, they have pretty much kept your credits the way they've been for quite a long time, and it's maxed out as far as how many credits you can get. So I don't think the accreditation is going to do much per se on your premium. I do think it's going to make an impact on your department and your claims and such. And in turn, that will help keep things all in line.
As I was filling out our policy at work, and the first question is, do you have accredited programs, and who accredits them, and how do they expire? So I was kind of curious as to what this underwriter's approach was. Another question would be is, when the second swimming pool gets active and involved, I'm guessing that that's going to automatically reduce or increase our exposure to a certain degree, just having a larger park and having the additional aquatic area?
That is correct, because the pool is a liability exposure that's contemplated in the premium. But I cannot, I don't have that kind of information with me to tell you exactly how much that pool portion is being charged.
If you're losing one, and you're picking up the other, so what's the net change?
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of like, I mean, sometimes it'll fool you a little bit, because like the modular building itself that was replaced at the sewer area, that one, actually the one that was replaced with is less expensive on the policy than the prior one. So, you know, we'd just have to kind of wait and see what the values are of that.
Julie, on the city's vehicle schedule, do you have a limit as far as years that you cut the comprehensive and collision off?
Yeah, every, anything that's over 10 years old, we take a look at. And then there are some items that are over 10 years old, but I mean, they are like a $200,000 sewer truck. Those items are staying on there, but we do look at anything over 10 years old and typically take them off. But we do review them before we just up and take them off. And Brandy and I, there were probably about four, maybe this time, off the top of my head.
Is that a policy, the 10 years, is that our policy? It seems like it's a long way out, but then again, I usually cut my comprehensive off early on my steps, so maybe it's what most people do.
That is the policy that we, that was voted in last year. And I actually think there's a little bit more to it. I think it's like, or $5,000, if the value, the blue book value is under $5,000, that would come off as well. Do you remember, yeah?
I think a lot of that has to do with the shape of the vehicle, how many miles they have on them. There's a lot of factors that go into that. But I know we don't need to pay a competent collision on a vehicle that's going to give, if it's totaled, give us $1,500, you know, that makes sense.
And I have to say, a lot of your vehicles are towards the under five years.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Julie? Okay, Julie, thank you very much.
Well, I thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity. Have a good day, or night, I should say.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the property and liability insurance renewal in the amount of $179,877.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schill Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello is now in the room. Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with one abstention. Terry, operational?
I don't hold anything else for you tonight.
Nothing on that? Okay. You want to call, yeah, send Greg back in if you would, Julie. Thank you. Okay, now we're ready to go again with the full board. The next on the agenda is Gabrielle Curry, our financial manager. Gabby, what do you got for us?
Good evening. First time I have is the accounts payable. There are some pay applications on there for some of the projects. So the amount for the month is $1,023,150.58.
Make a motion, will you pay the accounts payable in the dollar amount of $1,023,150.58?
Take it.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Miller, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $1,023,150.58. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schill Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Have a stain.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
The next item I have is the financial report for August. You'll notice there is a new fund on there for the interchange, the restricted sales tax and caper projects and debt service was all moved off of the general fund. So the current month amounts look kind of funky since that's when that was done. Sales tax is 3% for that month. And then the restricted sales taxes are right on, so.
Well, we started out the year, I don't remember if we were last year, because when we started out last year's revenue to budget negative for sales tax, and then this year we're positives. That's a good start, we're not playing catch-up.
Any questions on that one?
Any questions for, okay, what do you got next?
The next one is the September financial report, which sales tax is still 3%, holding at 3% for September as well. And then there are a couple of sidewalk projects that the Public Works Department is working on, that they got completed that month.
One of the projects, I'm trying to find this on here, was, we're going to do some work on Roosevelt, or Calriss.
Roosevelt.
From South Forty Road going south, you know, putting the sidewalks, widening the road and all that. Do we have an idea when that's going to take place? Is it a spring scheduled project? Yes, Dorvich is, Roosevelt between Flora and Banner, $198,400 in the budget. Do we have a time schedule on that, or is it just going to be after the winter?
I can check the schedule and see what quarter that's supposed to be in.
Okay.
My guess is if they've not started it now, it will be spring, because they wouldn't be able to do asphalt work through the winter. So I wouldn't think they would start it and not be able to complete it. So I'm just guessing, but my guess is spring.
Because I'm really kind of looking forward to when that starts, because I think the residents out there who have been dealing with parking cars and ditches for many years now will be extremely excited to hear that's coming and when it's coming. And it'll create a little chaos in their life for a while, because they'll have to figure alternative parking. But I think once that project's done, it's going to be a tremendous improvement to that area.
I can email you, I'll let you know, I'll look at the schedule.
Anything else? Thank you, Gabrielle.
All right, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Brandy Walters, Assistant Director of Operations.
Good evening. The first thing I have is the monthly marketing and business support report. We did receive a grant last month for $387, which will pay for half of a, it'll pay half of the bulletproof vests for two of them. And then we also had two new businesses that did roofing cuttings, not really business. One was the Fairgrounds Villas, and the other one was the boutique up here on Main Street.
I noticed there's a lead from the RCGA, Regional Commerce Growth. Can you talk a little bit about what that was?
It was basically, they had sent in some, requesting some information for a large acreage of land to put, I want to say it was, I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was a huge building to put on that. I know Dolores was working on that project and trying to get them all that information that she could, if she could find a lot.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know what the business actually was. They don't really tell us a whole lot.
I was kind of curious. Because we, I mean, we don't see too many leads. Well, I noticed that the EDC or the Warren County Economic Development isn't on here as a list to get out the number of contacts we get from them. But we do have the Regional Commerce Growth Association contact leads on it. And I was kind of curious as to what that was shaped into or what it looked like.
Yeah. I know that she sent them over that information. They send her a big, long, basically like a survey type of everything that she can fill out. And I know that she sent over that.
So was somebody looking for law land?
Yeah, they were looking for a large piece of land for a huge building.
And if memory serves me, I think Warren County is the westernmost county considered part of the St. Louis region. So it could have been sent out to every county or city.
Yeah, it was sent to everybody, I believe.
What else?
The next thing that I have on the agenda is my monthly administration report. And one of the trainings that we did this last month was active, the Active Shooter Training, which was taught by Rich Black. I had a lot of positive, a lot of positives from the employees that they really, I mean, it's not something that you enjoy, but it was some, very informative. He did a great job. I think one of the next ones that we would like to do is set something up with the board for a meeting scenario type thing. So we'll be getting that out to you. One of the other things was we had a special event last month for Hometown Halloween. I don't know if you guys got out to see that or not. There was about, Michelle estimated about 200 kids that received candy from the city during that event.
What are the lists? What's the safety trade, safety talk training? What are the lists? What's the safety trade, safety talk trainings? You know, a lot of those.
Yes.
For the course of the year, 260, which goes a long way, hopefully to help us with work comp rates and all of those stuff. So is, are those?
They're basically like a tailgate, if you've heard of the tailgate trainings. So each department, especially like Public Works and Grounds of Maintenance, a lot of those guys, they will have tailgate trainings. So they'll have something that they'll go over briefly with them. So it's kind of done in about 10 minutes, around 10, 15 minutes, and they try to do one a week. And it's just kind of just to keep the safety thing in the forefront of their mind, which I think is helping greatly by the number of accidents we've had. So between the safety, having the safety committee meetings every month, and that, I think is really helping.
Anything else for Brandy? Thank you, Brandy.
I have one more thing.
Oh, you got one more thing. You got tourism, don't you?
Yes, the tourism recommendations. So they met on the 24th, and they're wanting to get approval. These are all budgeted items for the Fall Festival, Yard Sale, all of their events, Christmas, Hometown Christmas. One of the other ones was the Hell on Wheels, which Mr. Daley is here for the trifolds with the maps. They're wanting to get the approval to pay for that, for a total of $107,761.56.
Before we go on, can I, is there somebody here who can talk about the Hell on Wheels events? Was there, I wasn't there, and this was the first time, and I was kind of curious as to how that went? Was there a lot of community participation?
Mike, would you like to approach the?
Some PR for your event for next year, right?
That's right. We actually have next year scheduled.
Oh, okay.
Mike Daley, Central Missouri Railroad, on the steering committee for the railroad days. We're actually kind of doing away with Hell on Wheels. There was a little bit negative connotation from some of the schools and some of the parents, but that's all right. Absolutely, it was really a great, great event for those two days. The Central Missouri Railroad, we actually quadrupled our attendance. We quadrupled our net amount of money we brought in this year. So it really was great. Can't express my appreciation for all the help that everybody in Warren County, especially Warranton, has given us, especially for the advertising dollars this past year. We estimated, well, we estimated about over 1,000 people actually came through. We think it was closer to 1,200, because we knew that there were some people that we did not count. So it was, so I think for the first year to get 1,200 people through, it was great. I know that the vendors were all very happy with everything going on. I know that there were vendors who spent the night here in Warranton, ate here in Warranton. So there was some business, good for business here also during the whole event. Everybody that I've talked to said that it was just a great two-day event. We were fortunate, Sunday morning, the weather was a little bit worrisome, but it cleaned up, cleared up. And so, but we also had plans for that too. So if we were going to have inclement weather, we were going to move the outdoor vendors inside. So there was lots of room. So I think overall, it was just a real great thing. We just really, I think, between the train club and all the city and the activity going on, it really did, was beneficial for all the communities here. And then next year, we'll be doing the first weekend of October. And I know the county commissioners have asked us to take it countywide. So we've already approached Martha's Vale down south also about doing something next year.
Mike, I think if there was one, and I don't know, I don't want to call it criticism, but I think that there was one thing they said that we could probably do better next time around was coordination between the different organizations, like your organization and the Arts Council.
Yes, yeah, there was our first year.
The city and everything like that.
There were, there were some things that we have discussed about, talked about getting a little bit of coordination, especially between some of the different vendors and some of the people walking in, some of the Arts Council. A lot of this thing this year happened kind of towards the end of getting ready, things we were waiting for. We really were waiting for the city of Truistale to get a hold of that property that Warranton Oil, that Warranton Oil had there for a while. So that, we were kind of not sure what venue we were going to be able to use for the craft vendors and make sure that that area was cleaned up and safe. So it really wasn't happening until about the last month, when things really started falling in placement. Yes, there are some things that we know will be done better. There'll be better coordination, better communication this coming year. So especially since we now know what we need to do, who we need to talk to, and get everything put into place. So yeah, we'll be talking probably in January of 2018 to get things rolling again, so.
Any other questions for Mike?
I just want to make a comment, Mike. The value to our community for bringing these sort of things into it, I don't know what the estimate would be on dollar wise, but the McDonald's, the Burger Kings, all of the eating places, the overnight hotels, that brings a lot of money into our community. And I'm, for one, proud that we do that. And I think we need to continue to cooperate and do the best we can to help those communities.
And I think historically, and Mike will probably agree, when you start these things, it's not just a one-year, it's a two or three-year to actually get a track record going.
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know, we get the exposure, the city gets the exposure and everything.
They normally say it's about a three-year program to really get it going really smooth and get everybody coming in. But so, everything, actually this year, we, I was very pleased with the outcome and the activity and the number of people coming through. And I think next year, we'll just continue to see it grow.
Get it growing.
Get it growing.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brandy on tourism issues?
Yeah, I had one. Has there been any thought, or has there been a review meeting of the, this past Fall Festival? As far as what it takes to put it on? You done that?
Yes, we have. We've gone over that with, we've gone over it with our staff, like our department heads. And we've also gone over it with tourism, both, some of the things that we could change for next year and how we're going to work all that out.
So you'll be making some recommendations in that area?
Probably see some, some changes in maybe the layout and everything, I think, the way they've been.
Well, and you know, I, for one, I really appreciate the staff and the hard work that they put in to make the event the success it is. But I think at some point, you have to kind of step back and add in some costs for hiring out some of the work that we're, you know, we're relying on our maintenance crew and certainly city staff. You pretty much lose a week there getting ready, and then the day of, and then the day after. So I just, when I was down there this, this year, you know, there's some worn out folks. We need to probably make sure.
Stressed out folks. Brandy tops the list on that, I'm sure, but you're right, they did a great job, so.
Yeah, as they always do. But I think we don't want to burn ourselves out, I guess, is what I'm getting at. And so, you know, these are the costs we see, but there are additional costs to this that are thrown in there by city staff, so.
One of the things that we've talked about, at least briefly, was to see if there's a, let's call it a production company out there that puts on this kind of event, that would be able to take it the day of the event and be the group who's kind of in charge of putting it all together, that maybe would bring staff with them. We haven't been successful at this point. We haven't spent a lot of time and energy on that. But I think that's something that we can look at to see if there is some possibility for that. We don't have an answer yet, but we just briefly started talking about that.
I'm just glad to hear you've been reviewing the.
Okay, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of $107,761.56.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Miller. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes. The motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
At this point, turn it over to Chief of Police Larry Ellard. Chief?
Good evening, Board. The only thing I have for you this time is four new policies for approval.
I noticed there's one of the policies is motor vehicle inventory policy, I guess, on impounded cars?
Yes, sir.
How much impounding of cars do we normally do?
It's not something that happens on an ideal basis, but you definitely need a policy in place that allows us to inventory vehicles that we impound.
Okay, but it's not, it's not a big part of what we're doing?
No.
But it needs to be there, because obviously you do it occasionally.
It has to exist, yes.
I take it these are all, again, a part of this accreditation process?
Working toward that, yes, sir.
Have you talked to our insurance carrier about cars that we impound that would be under our killer custody and control if we have insurance through them?
I have not. Typically, we sign it over to the tow company, and we don't actually maintain care and custody and control of anything. The tow company does.
Okay, where are they, where are they taken to?
To either one of, well, either one, whichever tow company responds, they take it to their impound yard.
Is that within the city, or is it?
Yes, sir.
So we're really never taking custody or control of the car?
Okay.
We're just facilitating that process.
Okay, correct.
It's the same way it's handled. We take donation cars in through our charity. We never really get the car. Somebody go picks it up, and we never really even see it a lot of times. The same type of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy changes or additions on motor vehicle inventory discretionary authority, TASER use prisoner search policies as submitted by Chief Ellard.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Is that all you have, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have bills to ordinance, so I'll call for first reading of Bill Number 68-17.
Motion for the introduction and first reading of Bill Number 68-17.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds, Series 2017 of the City of Warranton, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Roll call, vote?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Call for second and final.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello.
In ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds, Series 2017 of the City of Warranton, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Roll call, vote?
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. The next, have the omission on the.
Bill Number 70.
69, okay. Call for first reading of Bill Number 70-17.
So move.
Second. Is that 69-17, or?
69 is tabled.
69 is the one that was tabled. I'm sorry, that was what I was trying to get across. This is Bill Number 70-17. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance amending Schedule III prohibited parking of Title III traffic code in accordance with Section 365.030 by prohibiting parking at the intersection of East Veterans Memorial Parkway and Steinhagen Road, 355 feet west, on the south side only of Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Call for second reading and passage of Bill Number 70-17.
So move. Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Miller.
In ordinance amending Schedule III prohibited parking of Title III traffic code in accordance with Section 365.030 by prohibiting parking at the intersection of East Veterans Memorial Parkway and Steinhagen Road, 355 feet west, on the south side only of East Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Roll call, vote?
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Now I entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate. Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call, vote?
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. We will now go into, excuse me, into executive session.